I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the record session of the ordinance council for March 2nd, 2020. We're already into the spring of this meeting. We have a full council tonight, so no need to issue excuses. We don't have a public hearing, but I do need a motion for the agenda and the consent agenda.
Salute.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and the consent agenda for this meeting. Are there any questions or discussions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't have presentations tonight, but we'll be in the department and portion will begin with Richie.
I have a few things for tonight for the council. The first is we put out a press release today, and I'm just going to kind of read it. Makes it a little bit cleaner, so I don't forget anything. The Goldendale Police Department has ramped up efforts to put people with arrest warrants behind bars. This is part of the police department's proactive community policing plan that we've established. The community policing plan includes citizens calling 911 when they recognize somebody with an arrest warrant. The Goldendale Police Department has been active in distributing Goldendale Most Wanted posters and postings that we put on Facebook. This has increased our citizens' ability to help the police department locate people who should be in jail from these arrest warrants. Since the police department has started doing the Most Wanted information, calls have increased from the public to the police department. We've arrested Crystal Miller, Alex Scherf, Tyson Smith, Adam Bronson, Christopher Worship, Jacob Mylan, and Ronnie Sherf have all been arrested by the Goldendale Police Department over the past several weeks on arrest warrants. Many of these arrests have been from investigations by the police alongside phone calls from our partnering citizens. I just want to thank the community for making those phone calls, looking at those wanted posters, and helping us. I want to just remind the citizens though not to approach anybody with an arrest warrant, but to call 911 or dispatch, which is 773-4545, when they see somebody with a warrant. We never want them to grab or try to hold on to somebody who they believe could have a warrant. We have to make sure that we confirm that that warrant is still active at that time. So make sure you just call police and let us do our job. This has been a very good program for us. We're seeing really excellent results, so we're going to continue to do the Most Wanted. We're hoping to put out one every Wednesday and just continue doing a cycle and using that program. Last week, we also had a trial on a Goldendale police case. It was on Max Long, and the trial was for rape of a child in the third degree. And we did have a guilty verdict come back. Very happy with our prosecutor and with our officers that were involved in that case that did an excellent job investigating that case. And sentencing won't be for another week or so, so I'm not sure exactly what the sentencing will be on that case. But I'm very happy that we got a guilty verdict on that. We've also been very busy with our prosecutor on many of the people that we've been charging out lately. This isn't something I do very often, but I'm going to give just a little... Actually, all of these came in today from our prosecutor on cases that have been pled guilty through his office. The first one is a lady named Sequia Cook. We arrested her for assault in the third degree. Today, she pled guilty for 15 days in jail. Our second one is Christopher Worship. He pled guilty for attempting to elude a police vehicle, operating a motor vehicle without an ignition interlock, driving while license suspended in the third degree, and resisting arrest of the Goldendale Police Department. He received 29 months in prison. So that was a very good case, and I'm very happy with that one. Jacob Mylan, which many of you heard me talk about, I think his last council, he's already pled guilty, which is pretty amazing. In two weeks, away from the arrest, completely guilty, and we're talking weeks. This is what he pled guilty to. Burglary in the first degree, two counts of unlawful possession of a firearm, assault in the second degree, possession of a stolen vehicle, malicious mischief in the second degree, malicious mischief in the third degree, and obstructing Goldendale law enforcement officers. He received 153 months, which is pretty much almost 13 years he received. So again, I think the prosecutor is doing a great job with getting these. These aren't even going to trial. He's getting plea guilty pleas out of these. Another one is Adam Bronson. We arrested him for possession of methamphetamine. Today, he pled guilty and got six months in jail. We also arrested Terry Shearer for possession of methamphetamine, and he received two months in jail. So these are all guilty pleas that we've received today. I'm very happy that our cases are being fled out without even having to court. That shows the quality of the investigations that the officers are doing, and again, I'm extremely happy with that. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Good report. Noah, Fire Department?
Okay. So the Goldendale Fire Department is putting together a fire corps volunteer program. And what it is, is individuals that may not necessarily be firefighters by fires and stuff like that. They would do rehab, performing data entry type tasks, administrative type tasks, and different things like that. So they're starting it. Julie Buck has been helping out quite a bit, along with Phil, to get this thing going. And we're going to be putting it out. And there's an email, and you can always call the Fire Department for information on that. Am I missing anything? Let's double do that one.
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is productivity and awareness. We got a grant through the EMS Council. Click at that County EMS Council. And what we're doing is going to be passing out some reflective vests for people out walking or running or walking their dogs and giving them information, like I said, as part of a grant that we've received. So is it on that one? Perfect. That's all. Yeah. I'm good to go.
I'll get that record. Thanks, Noah.
Thank you.
The next item is council business, and Larry will present one item of business that we have tonight.
Okay. The item of business that we have tonight is a recommendation from the ordinance committee to, after their discussion regarding amendment number one to the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the Goodno Station Development and the city of Goldendale. It's regarding the piece of property that where the former nursing home is located, Met Adams Care Center. It's on a piece of property. It's like 4.5 acres. And then, of course, it has the old nursing home facility that's still on there. So just, I know we've got some new council members who haven't heard about how long we've been working on this project. But back in... So to give you some history, back in 2012 in December, the city was, actually acquired the property at no cost to the city. More on that later. However, before that, the property had been vacant for quite some time as well. I remember when the nursing home actually closed down. Do you remember, Andy?
I don't.
I think early 2000s, wasn't it?
Yeah. Been a while.
Been a while.
Been a while before that.
I think it was more like...
Well, anyway, it's been shut down for a lot of years. And so the city took it... City acquired it from Laurel Hill Enterprises at no cost to the city. And of course, the city was hoping that we could do something with that building. So in 2013 and 14, we had several meetings with the council members at that time, with other entities about what to do with that building. The thinking was maybe we could remodel it into a building for City Hall, community center, food bank stuff, shelters, police departments, fire departments, all different kinds of entities. And maybe we could put into that building and have the centralized city services. Upon reviewing some of those costs and doing some initial analysis of what it would take, one of the key things that cost quite a bit of money was actually taking off the roof and building a roof that was a gabled roof instead of a flat roof. Flat roof, of course, allows... It needs a lot of maintenance and was subject to leaking quite a bit. So after we had those discussions, we decided that that cost was going to be $2.5 to $3 million and wasn't going to be feasible. So then in 2015 and 16, the council directed staff to go through a request for proposal to see if anybody would be interested in purchasing that property, leasing the property, just whatever proposal they thought of. And there were only two people that responded to that. One was Veterans Recreation Center or something like that, and then Goodno Station Development were the two proposers. And so we went through that process, had several public meetings, and it was determined that the council had determined that they would sell it to Goodno Station Development. They had a plan and a proposal that they would do some residential type work and some mixed use. So mixed use meaning potentially some commercial multifamily, duplexes, single family homes, some combination of that. Anyway, the council decided that they would accept that one, and in August of 2018, then that's when we sold it to Goodno Station Development. And in that agreement, there was a paragraph number five that had contingencies. So it was sold to Goodno Station Development with some contingencies. And one of the contingencies was that the city would review the status of the project and agree to negotiate in good faith. There was a two-year requirement to do something with that property. And so now we're doing something with the property, but we also are... We believe that demolition is really the key to this particular piece of property. If you go over to the property right now, it's... Roof is caving in, and there's black mold, and there's other things that are concerned in that. And so Goodno Station Development is ready to pursue demolition, abatement and demolition of the project. So let's just go through paragraph five, and we'll go through the red line piece of it, which is on the second page of their letter. So as I indicated, Goodno Station is going to complete an abatement and demolition of the existing building by May 30 of 2020. So that's one thing that was not in the original paragraph number five. So now they have agreed to abate demolition it by May 31. On section B, we decided that we would delete that section because, again, the focus is getting it demoed and abated and demoed, and that's the key here. Get that thing abated and demoed and out of our eye... Out of sight, so to speak. Under C, the city agrees to connect a temporary water supply. That was an agreement in the first real estate purchase and sale agreement in paragraph five, so there's no change for C. D is a waiver of the existing monthly meter base fee until June of 2022, and which represents a two-year extension of the previous waiver, which expired in June 1 of 2020. So that is at a cost to the city of $2,000. That's just, in other words, we're not collecting that amount of money. Over a two-year period of time, that would equal about $2,000. And then on section E, the city agrees to ten future water and sewer services for development of the project, and this waiver is in effect until all 10 connections have been made. So that is an overtime request, and that was already in the previous paragraph number five. So that's no change there either, except that we are going to add a phrase after the word connections. We're going to add the phrase "one connection equals one ERU", which means that an ERU is an equivalent residential unit. So for most anybody that has a house, you have a three-quarter meter outside of your house that feeds all the fixtures in your house, and that's an equivalent one residential unit. So for instance, they decided that part of their build-out was multifamily or multifamily housing, and they had one meter on that building, they may need a one-inch meter or a two-inch meter. And that... There's a calculation that you make to determine how many ERUs that is required for that particular building. And then the last one is that the city would agree to move one driveway approach on Simco and no charge to Goodno. This is something that would only be constructed until... It would not be constructed right away. It would not be constructed until there was an approved subdivision request. There's no reason to change the way that cars enter in and out of there until there's actually some plan or land use agreement that would require that that particular driveway approach be moved. So again, that's an overtime and not required right away, only after there is a plan, a plan for subdivision in that area. And we estimated that that would cost about $4,000. But that's, again, not a today number. That would be a future number. So the other thing that we talked about at the ordinance committee was the intangibles. Things like we don't have an eyesore anymore. Things like the cleanup can start right away. So it's a unique window of opportunity. It's a good time of year to do it. The contractor's ready to go. So those things are in our favor about getting the thing torn down, which I think the ordinance committee felt like was the most important thing, is get rid of it. And then the final intangible is there's not a need to go through the nuisance abatement procedure. It is a public... It is a private enterprise doing it, not a public entity. And oh, by the way, if it were public, we'd have to pay Davis Bacon rates. But since it's private, they can do it for a little less money, and that's better all the way around for us. They're suited for developments. We're not really in the business of housing developments. So that's the summary. And the ordinance committee reviewed that with the staff and with Mr. Callen, and they recommended that it would be to the full council that the mayor be authorized to execute amendment number one to the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the city and Goodno Station Development. So that's our recommendation from the staff and from the ordinance committee. You may want to... I don't know if Gene wants to say anything. Have anything more?
I'm certainly open to asking or answering questions. Do I need to introduce myself? Gene Callen, I'm the president of Goodno Station Development. Address is 38 Knight Road, Goldendale, 18620. To me, Larry did a great job, especially the history before we were involved. I will add, once we... I think both parties that were looking at the project back in 18, the Veterans Group and our group, there was some hope that that building could be reused. And it was quickly evident, even two years ago, that the building's beyond any sort of imaginable use at all. The only use I could think of is if someone wanted to film a zombie walking in. Because it's as bad as it looks outside, the inside is... You can't describe how bad it is. So it definitely needs to come down. And the only thing I would add, we could go through any questions you have. The only thing I would reinforce what Larry said is there is a... We have a great window of opportunity, I think. We all want it taken down. We want it taken down. Two years ago, we had some abatement and demolition pricing, and it was up there in the $200,000 range, and it just could not make, you know, financial sense to do that. We had a new recent abatement survey done with, I think they took 154 tests of different materials around the building, sent those to a lab, got those back. And then we used that information to send it out to, I think, 25 companies in Oregon and Washington that are certified abatement and demolition contractors, got back nine bids. The lowest bid is closer to what we can afford. And the reason that we're asking for some incentives that Larry described is the land value, we believe, is here today. What it's going to cost to abate and demolish is here. There is a gap, and we know, and we're able... We're willing to absorb that gap, but we're hoping that, you know, some of these incentives, like moving the driveway and the connection charges, can help in the future with a perform a mixed-use project. There, we're kind of in the process of brainstorming right now. So, you know, if this gets approved, the contract does say that we're obligated to have this removed by May 30th. I do have the contractor hovering right now. We haven't given them a notice to proceed, but if we can get through this meeting tonight, I think we could have this building going by the end of the month. And so for us, that's a win, and I'm able to answer any specific questions.
I just know this was the first private building I saw when I moved to town two and a half years ago. It was quite the eyesore, so I'm one excited that it'll be coming down. So, thank you.
I guess for me, I kind of gave the overall group an apology because of that committee meeting, and kind of came away from it. A few days later, I had a lot of questions. And I talked with Larry and the mayor today, and went back and thought on it some more. And I guess at this point, I just make a motion to delay the decision and wait until the full council membership can be provided with more information and review this letter of concern that I have, so we can get some more information on the details and negotiations. I know it's an exciting project to address that and remove it, but for myself, I just want some more information. So I don't know if I could ask anyone for a second so we can discuss that? I have a letter here that notes some of my concerns about the process.
Before we continue with the letter, we have to finish the...
Oh, do we?
The vote.
That's right.
Vote. Ask for any discussion, and then vote.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone. Did you say postpone or...?
Delay the council decision until we have the full council membership on board with an information package about the history and financial impact of the GSD's proposal, as well as just for everyone to review my letter of concern.
Okay. We have a motion to that effect. We have a second. We have questions or discussion before we have votes.
Well, if we can't see the letter, we don't know what the details of the letter is.
Oh, actually, it's right here. We can fast round and discuss it. I'll go through it a little bit. It got to be more lengthy than I anticipated. I don't know if folks out here want to see a copy of this, but oh, yeah. And I think maybe just because I'm more of an analytical critical thinker, new to council, not familiar with this at all, but when I just... I looked at it more as the language and the contract and the commitments by the city and the request, and not so much with respect to what's best to happen out there. And so I'm just asking for us to step back a little bit and maybe reevaluate, or at least for myself, give myself some more time to get more information and see if we can help Gene make this happen over there. But I don't... I guess I'm not in a position to approve what's been proposed here myself personally.
My question is, Larry, are we able to push this along possibly? Are we able to do any technical sessions? For what reason? Just to do a quick discussion?
So I did look into that because I have a little bit of a progress process, which is why I visited with Larry and the mayor earlier. But the only thing I could find is if it relates to real estate negotiations and if the public discussion would result in change to the real estate negotiations. I didn't see any other potential avenue for that, so unfortunately. So really, I just did a request that we take some time to look at it and flood some more information.
I personally feel that we should move forward, letting Gene do everything. I know that, you know, you're new on the council, but I... Well, I know not everyone knows everything of the whole process, but I know it's been quite the process, and I feel comfortable with moving forward with it, but that's...
Yeah, and I just... Yeah, I understand the process. I just have to state my position.
Some of your concerns that maybe we can solve.
Yeah, yeah, you bet we can go through this a little bit.
Move on?
One, I was just concerned about, I mean, if the city's going to give out concessions, then I feel like we should know what the fiscal impact is and what the challenges are to landowners meeting. So, you know, if the cost of removal is higher than the value of the land, then, you know, we should take a step back and really put hard numbers for that so we can verify that before we do allow concessions. So for me, as a council member, making decisions for the city and the public, that's what I struggle with. And you guys probably are really familiar with that. Maybe it's, you know, it's not a good decision.
I can say with it. We kind of did our own... We went off the study before, and the cost is extreme, especially for us, because we have to go through Davis Bacon if we do it. They already did a analysis much before. We've actually had three analyses. It was quite high, way more than the land is worth. And they're going to be absorbing quite a bit.
And I mean, I'm more than happy to spend the time to dedicate to reviewing those and dedicating to reviewing, you know, what Gene's process and proposals is. I understand his financial challenges. But for myself, in this position, I can't say yes to this. And I respect your position and familiarity, and so that's just where I'm at.
I'm kind of stick with Andy, just because I know a lot.
Well, I mean, the thing is, I know you guys are new, but the thing is also they've already... We've already done all this stuff before almost and gone through this whole process. I mean...
So the... From your comments here is that the contract defines a 12-month extension. And the update is requesting, if I read it right, if I remember right, it was a two-year extension. So the original contract said that at the end of the original contract, it would be brought to council for a 12-month extension. And that's if they were moving forward with the abatement.
Is that the way you read it, Gene?
I think that's the clause that we're striking that says there's no... From my point of view, the... I'm sorry. The intent of the contract was to encourage initially demolition and abatement, to get it cleaned up. There was also some intent on encouraging a future development. That's what we're requesting. Doesn't have a deadline, because I... There's no way I can commit that we're going to... There was a permit clause that you have to take out a permit by a certain time, but there was no clause that said you have to build X by a certain time.
So in what sense, we're saying also that demolition permit is a product?
Right. So now, it doesn't... I don't know. If we can clarify, this is the same Goodno, or they are the same ones that promised housing development for 200 employees for a vineyard? Is that correct?
Well, it was actually market-based housing. It wasn't actually housing for specifically employees.
When it went public, the media and everything that was said at the time, I was an account member then, there was talk about a vineyard being developed in the area and housing for employees. And that is talk, and... Or am I missing some here?
Yeah, we're still doing a vineyard. There was one of our initial hopes is that... There was, there was, one of our initial hopes is that market rate housing, I think at the time I used the word workforce housing and that was, that was misconstrued in the public venue. We weren't talking about subsidized housing. We were talking about market rate for full and part-time employees at a vineyard that were still developing. But there was nothing in the contract that, that required that that happened at a certain time. That was the, just a verbalized, our incentive on point while we were looking at the site initially.
But it did inspire decision-making by council members because we saw, or they saw at the time as a good potential for development within the city and this contract was developed based on that potential and the high likelihood of development being put in place. And so now we're renegotiating the terms and changing dollar figures and commitments. I think we should get an update on the full context of the project.
Well, if you're, Lauren, are you asking for the master plan to be developed and disclosed before this is approved? Because that will be, there will be a time conflict there. We don't have the master plan approved. Right now, there is still a master plan for a mixed-use neighborhood of primarily housing and maybe a little bit of retail, maybe a little bit of office, but that's not, that's not why we're here tonight. We're here, I'm here tonight to see if we can get this thing demolished with this window of opportunity.
So, I guess what I'm asking for is that as city council, I'm going to be asked to give a yes on this, that I agree with the original contract language and for that waiver, it's a 12-month waiver provided a good no, is diligent pursuing development of the property. And some of the language in here makes me think that maybe the development has changed considerably or it's just going to be lots that are sold. For instance, the change of the 10, what is it? The 10, the waiver of the 10 water and sewer connections now being passed on to the successor for, into perpetuity rather than just with Good No Station Development. And if Good No Station Development was still looking at implementing a development right there over the entire property site, there would be no need to change contract language to the successor in my mind. And that's why, you know, I just asked that I have time or my council members consider taking time to thoroughly review this and make a wise decision.
We didn't, I didn't think we changed the language.
No, we just got rid of the deadline.
It wasn't discussed, but it was changed in the document.
We just got rid of the deadline?
Yeah.
And you're passing the waiver on to successors as well?
Well, we have, if, if, yeah, we, this is now owned privately, so if Good No Station decided to, you know, have another LLC own it or we did sell the property, sure, that would, that would go with the package of, of the project.
Right, but if it's a change in contract language, it should be clearly brought out and discussed, not buried in the language and not brought up, brought to our attention in your presentation. That's my concern, one of my concerns. So, anyway, that's why I feel like we need a little bit more time to go through this and really look at what's going on here.
Any other discussion before we have a vote?
If, if we were, I don't know if, if we can, if Lauren would consider changing his motion, if, if we were to put a set time instead of, because it, and it did caught my eye before that if we went from a 12-month extension, essentially if they needed an extension, they would ask for a 12-month extension to a no time limit frame on there. So, if we were to say add a timeframe to that, maybe go back to the original contract and give the 12-month extension where they would show some development moving forward, then we can extend that. And then if that's not enough time, at that time, we can ask for another extension. Or we can go to a 24-month extension, double the extension for them to show some development. It's, it's almost two years, I think, for six months before the two-year mark. And that's just been the demo part, which I guess it is going to be a cost to them. But can we change it to have a time limit, say either 12-month or 24-month for these concessions? And then if you're moving with development and everything's in play, then we can consider at that time, or that council can consider at that time, another extension as opposed to leaving it wide open for an eternity possession of blocks to transfer ownership and nothing be developed for a hundred-dollar piece of property. And would that satisfy good no representatives and would that satisfy council?
Okay, so are you, you're talking about the 10 service connections, right?
Right, the concessions that we're making with the amendments, which would be the 10 service state, yes.
Okay, so I thought that language stayed the same.
Well, I believe we, we just deleted the deadline of obtaining the permit to keep the, to keep the 10 connection waiver in place.
I guess for my part, there's a lot in here and I'm not making suggestions that this isn't accepted or is accepted or changed in any way, just asking for a delay. We want to put a timeline on the delay, two weeks so that we have time to look at this and discuss and get more information back, or maybe it takes longer than two weeks. My only request is for time to give it more consideration. That's it. And so we should probably either go around the table possibly, Mr. Mayor, and get everyone's input on this and call the vote.
I'll call for any discussion, certainly, the questions that any of the council has before we...
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points. As we get into the 10 water sewer connections, it said, the language said that the city will waive up to 10 future water and sewer charges for new development under this department complies with zoning development standards and land use. That didn't have any, that was the original language. There was no time limit.
Didn't have a deadline?
There was no time limit.
So, what was the time limit attached?
Well, let me finish with this one first. So, the language regarding, which would be paragraph five in the, on the second page of his letter under item number five E, isn't that the same length? Oh, I see. It added the word successor, is that what you're saying, Lauren?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as the waiver of the fact that all connections have been made, which is into perpetuity? I don't know, I really struggle with this and I apologize that it's come at this point in the game, but, you know, I look at our infrastructure and, you know, where the city's at with the needs that we have and providing waivers that have real value here. And I just, I'm just asking for time to be able to give this more consideration. And I'm just one voice here, so I should probably stop speaking so others can be heard.
I'm just saying. The issue is the year is trying to get rid of this building and it's still standing. Yes, we have a unique opportunity. Exactly.
I know in the cost of the abatement, I think we're probably getting a really good deal with the concessions that we have.
Well, it sounds to me like, you know, the, until this building is eliminated, the potential for developing this property doesn't really exist. So, you know, anyone who would want to come in and develop, good or otherwise, is going to be, you know, held hostage on doing that until this property is removed. So, again, I have as much intel on this as Lauren does, but just from reading over this, that's kind of what I'm seeing here.
I know we run into a situation as we try to get homeowners to clean up property. They say, well, why don't you clean up your property, the nursing home, which has been an eyesore since 2012. And that's, that's a part of what this helps us to, to get the momentum for neighborhoods to be improved, things to be done that, right now, that's, it gives us leverage to push that a little bit harder to get our city looking the right way as much as we can. Can't do it all, but this was a very key part of that and we've worked on it for a number of years. So, I thought there is explanation had clarified what, what those concessions were because we didn't buy the land and it was given to us. There's no cost there at all.
I just think a little bit that it might cost us in the future, which is little compared to what we would have had to pay to actually take this building down, I think is pretty small compared... I mean, even if nothing gets built on it for five years, it's gone. And that's what people constantly are saying to me. When is that building coming down? Why do we have to keep looking at that eyesore? And here we have the opportunity to get rid of that eyesore. I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying.
We have a discussion.
And it could sit blank for 10 years or it could move to somebody, they may decide to sell the property to another developer.
Yeah, and I guess to be fully honest and open about this, this discussion was followed by a discussion about what to do with cleaning up other properties around the city. And the approach was not to incentivize or encourage, but to find and, and go that route to get other properties to be cleaned up. And so if we're going to make a decision to help here, maybe that is the right decision. I'm just, more information is necessary for myself personally.
Any other comments before we move on to the session?
I think we're ready for a vote. Well, this is in the vote for Lauren's motion, right?
Yeah, this is on Lauren's motion to table the consideration of this recommendation of the ordinance committee to amend the real estate purchase agreement between the city and Good No Station Development. We've had our discussion, we've had remarks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. And we go back to the original proposal, which was to authorize the mayor to exercise this amendment, number one, of the real estate purchase and sales agreement between our city and Good No Station Development. I need a motion to...
I move to authorize the mayor to execute amendment number 01 to the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the city of Goldendale and Good No Station Development.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute agreement number 01 to the real estate purchase and sales agreement between the city of Goldendale and Good No Station Development. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So, we have two that are against and five for, the name of motion passes.
Connie said on the first motion, she didn't hear it. Lauren, did you say yes on the...
Yes, I said it again.
Okay. Maybe I didn't get it out there though.
I didn't hear you.
She didn't hear you.
So, the council has passed this proposal, it's on the agenda. And I think we'll be very, very satisfied when we see the building removed. One of the things that they're planning to do is leave those beautiful trees there and that will be an enhancement of Simcoe right off the bat. Move on to the rest of the agenda. We don't have resolutions or ordinances to pass tonight or to oppose. We have now the report of officers, the administrator, the council and the mayor. And we'll begin with Julie, move around the table.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank Reggie and Larry for the wonderful tour we had on Saturday. Being a new person to town, it was quite interesting to see the different buildings and learn about the town I live in, so it was a great experience, so thank you guys.
Gene?
Yeah, yeah, to follow up on what Julie said, that was a great tour that we had around town over the weekend. It's often hard to give up a Saturday, you know, when, when you work during the week, but it was, it really was worth it and I felt like a real Goldendale pro, like showing, pointing things out to my husband as we were driving around town, like, did you know that this is where this is? But I wanted to thank for sure Larry for arranging that and to Reggie and to Noah and their folks and Andy out of the wastewater treatment plant and Doug from Public Works for really giving us so much information. It was, it was a day well spent and of course, the icing on the cake was getting to go up to the newly reopened observatory and see that facility, which is absolutely phenomenal. Everyone needs to get out there right away and support that place because it is really something that we should all be proud of as, as a city to have that now reopen. The observatory was great even before the renovation. Troy Carpenter up there does amazing work and we are so lucky to have him. And just with that new facility that he has now to work with, I think it's going to be a huge draw for our community. And I'm really excited to see what the future holds for the observatory and for the greater Goldendale area as we are now kind of going to be swimming in its wake, I think, with, with the draw that it's going to bring to our, to our little community. And everyone, be sure to wash your hands. And that's all I have tonight.
Yeah, actually, thanks to Larry and all the department heads for the tour. It was really good to see a lot of successes in the, in the city and over, well, my time being familiar with it a couple of decades and also good to know about some of the challenges and needs that are out there. And we ended with a great tour through the observatory, which is a great new public facility for the community here. And I also thank the council members, the mayor and Larry for letting me voice my concerns and criticisms for the way I, you know, new to council, look at these projects and just appreciate that. I'm kidding.
It's the process. Jim?
I was slacker, I wasn't there. I've seen most of them, but thanks Reggie for taking these guys for their party. I mean, what better to have the chief driving you around when, when you're going around partying in Goldendale?
Except he's going, that guy looks suspicious. I'm like, Reggie, we're not in your car. You can't pull people over.
They're not, I won't be next, here next meeting.
Oh, well, dang it.
I won't tell you why.
Yeah, Phil and I won't be here either.
Oh, you guys won't be here?
We got a forum?
Yeah, we just got a mixer over here.
Actually, I have two things because Gene reminded me. On Saturday night, I had the pleasure of going to the observatory and seeing the new building and I was amazed with the look of the building and really awesome. Troy does a great job up there. And also again, for Reggie, good job on everything you guys are doing. It's, and there's so many times to see, of course, on social media where, well, no, please aren't doing nothing. And I mean, the last, I think, three meetings that you've had this long list of things that you guys are doing and really appreciate your guys' hard work. Thank you.
Phil?
Well, I think I'll, I'll second everybody's things all the way around town. However, I do want to extend my thank you not just to Reggie, but to the church he belongs at, provided the bus. Definitely that made the trip possible, otherwise, I mean, we could have had a driver, but no bus. I know they went through some, some interesting steps there to make sure that we had transportation.
It's really not good for the city council to tour around in slot cars.
Definitely not in the back of the... I'm not sure we would have had enough seat belts for everybody, but I do want to thank all the department heads. They, they made a really good point of sharing all their concerns, sharing what they do for their work. And at least for me, it makes more sense when they come asking for money because that's all department heads tend to do. But now we have an explanation as to why and how long they've been working with some of the things that might break down or they might need. And I know they also go through a lot of grants trying to figure out where to get the money since obviously the city is not in a, in a position to just write them checks for every wish list they have, but those wish lists are very carefully thought of to make, make appropriate use of the funds. So, that is huge. I want to thank Lauren for his letter. I'm glad that I'm not the only one stirring the pot here. I know I came in the same way and, you know, but I did hear... And, you know, but I, I did hear when, when I first made my commitment to run for council that this was the council that rubber stamped everything. And I'm glad to say that that is not the case. It is obvious by the discussions that we go nearly way over the 30 minute, 45 minute mark into two hours and we have discussions about everything. So I think that is the better way of government and without having those questions and concerns brought up, we can't have proper discussion and make solid decisions. So I'm just glad I'm not the only one. So, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes, well, I also wanna comment, it was a great tour, I think everybody enjoyed it. Also, I was gonna bring up Larry, do you know when they might start doing some more potholes, filling in one of these days, or has that been talked about? I know they did a good job a while back and I just wanna know, just curiosity, when they might be working on again.
I can double check and let you know.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. If I can break two items real quick. If we're on potholes real quick, I, I was gonna mention this and I forgot. If we can look at, they said court and grant the one way. Earlier today, I saw a couple of people going the wrong way and I realized I don't believe that there is enough signage, if you're going down on court, to tell you not to make a left turn or a right turn. Once you're committed to it, they're, they do not, you know, one way street. But I, I don't think I saw it, if, if they are there, I don't think they're visible enough for people. I saw a couple of people today making turns from, from court. You know, if you're coming from Maine, you, definitely there's enough signage there, you know. And then the other thing, we were visiting the park earlier this week on Collins and I happened to run chasing a ball out into Collins and realized that there's also maybe some signage there that could show that it is a park, people should maybe consider that there's kids running.
At World War Two.
War Two Park. Yeah. I know Collins is a main thorough way and I'm glad I stopped and looked both ways.
Sure. Like slow children that play or something?
Yeah. Just showing that there's a park right there. But anyways, just.
You'd have to say slow dispatch.
Yeah, definitely. I was the one chasing the ball, so.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks all of you and thank you, Lauren, for the discussion that this has generated. I think it'll help us all. One thing I wanted to point out, working together through committees to make decisions that are thought out and discussed with staff and well prepared is not rubber stamping. That is cooperation and working and coordinating together. And I think this, this council is very, very successful at that. It's not wrong to say no at all, not at all. And I want both of you to understand that. This is not something that's been wrong. It's created a discussion that I think has been useful and it's solidified other decisions in favor of the motion that had been made before. I have two things I'd wanna raise under the mayor's report. One of the 800 pound gorilla in the room, the coronavirus and the governor's proclamation that has been given for our whole state. And the proclamation that's given over the weekend on the coronavirus respiratory disease proclaiming a state of emergency to exist in all counties of the state of Washington. At this time, there are no known cases in county, in click that county. The city of Goldendale is working with our county public health department and emergency management to keep updated on the progress, the plans and actions that would be necessary if a person is, is confirmed to have been affected by the disease in this city. The healthcare professionals say the easiest way to, to slow the spread of the virus is to practice good hygiene. Wash your hands often, not just once a day, but often. Sanitize frequently, touch surfaces in your home or in your office, wherever you might be at. I would certainly wipe the handles of shopping carts and that's all provided in the grocery store. But this is, this is sound sanitary practice that we need to be aware of and, and really stay close to it. And if you get sick, regardless if it's a head cold, flu or this virus, stay home. Stay home and see a medical physician if it's something that you're concerned about that needs to be done. We're gonna continue to give updates as we receive them and also the council from the Department of Health and other things for the citizens of Goldendale. This is something I think it's important for us to keep in mind to help everybody. It's a scary sort of thing and that's understandable, but the scare and the fear seems to be diminishing because the cases are beginning to kind of play out. And that, that is helpful, to see some progress being made there. The other item I wanted to bring up, and everybody's already said thank you for the tour, and of course, I enjoyed it as well, but I wanted to make sure that you know who organized that tour, who did all the work to get it done, who worked with Reggie to get the bus. That was all done by Larry Billamy. But Larry Billamy, I found, one of the things I found that's the most disturbing is mayor. It's very often something is done in this city, good or bad, the mayor gets credit or blamed for it no matter what. Well, I don't mind taking it, but I really don't like to take the praise for something somebody else has done. And Larry did a phenomenal job. This is probably the best prepared city council with such new members that this city has ever had. And you're working together, it's, it's good and we appreciate that very much, Larry. It's excellent what you do.
It was awesome.
You're welcome.
Snap, Larry.
And that's a good thing.
Before you go to public comment, I'll stick my city administrator report in here and try to get a new date, because the other, the one thing that we haven't done yet that I wanna do for, especially for the new council members, is to have a visit from our WCAA, which is Washington City's Insurance Authority, they provide liability insurance for us, to the tune of about $85,000. So they're an important part of our budget and we wanna stay in, in good graces with them. But it's important that we have a training so that you understand your role as a new council member in the area of liability to the city and to yourself. So this is a training that's provided by Washington City's Insurance Authority. It's called the Council Do's and Don't. It's about an hour to an hour and 15 minute presentation. And I think we can accomplish it in conjunction with a, with a council meeting. I had committed to them, I can, I'll change it, because I already heard a couple of people aren't gonna be here, but we'll change it, because I did have it scheduled for the next council meeting. But if Shannon's gonna be gone and Julie and Phil are gonna all be gone, it wouldn't be worth it. I'd rather have everybody there to hear it. It's good to be reminded even about the Council Do's and Don'ts. So for that matter, is April, April 6th? Does anybody know if they're not gonna be able to make April 6th?
Unfortunately, I won't be here.
You won't be there?
I wouldn't be if it did.
That's spring break, right?
Yeah.
Till then, okay.
What about 20th?
20th, we might have to push it out to the 20th.
I'm good, the 20th.
You'll be here on the 20th?
Yeah.
Jane, do you have anything?
No, I'm free.
All right, we'll, we'll change it from the council meeting on the 16th to the April 20th council meeting.
And that would be 6 o'clock?
No, that would be after our regular meeting. So after our regular meeting and then we'll just have, go right into, he wants it called a work session.
Okay.
So it'll be, it'll be a work session specifically for the council and training as far as liability issues are concerned. So that's my holding answer.
I wanna make a remark about the Do's and Don'ts training, because I found at city council, it surprised me right away, people were listening to me more than if I was just walking around town. And then I became mayor, became even more touchy. So it helps you a lot to be able to know what is appropriate to be talking about or not talking about. The actions that you take are of public interest more than you might realize at times. Okay, we'll go on to public comment. Anybody here for public comment tonight? Give your name and flip it into three minutes.
Okay. Hi, thanks for being here, appreciate all you. My name's Doug. I've been in Goldendale for about 11 years now. I've also been a volunteer for the Little League Department that plays in Deco Park for three years now. And that's what I wanted to hear about today, is some of the park conditions over there have been bad since I started and are only getting worse, especially when it comes to the noxious weeds and other conditions. I'm concerned about the electrical and how that's ran. There's a bunch of broken stuff. And Coney Park just really needs a good cleanup and I believe the grounds itself is the city's job, for lack of better words. And I really feel that Goldendale community can use better assistance over there at Coney Park. I hope to get your support.
Are you part of the legal officers for Little League?
I did get volunteered into it office, they actually like made me a spot, so I'll have to say 50% yes on that one.
Well, I'm just gonna make a comment that we, I could come out there and meet you there with our public works supervisor and we could point out those things that you see as problems.
That would be great if we could just, the noxious weeds and, and other things are great. When can we do that?
I remember when we first took it over, that was one of the key things that we wanted to try to control was the noxious weeds, the goadheads and things like that.
It, it is bad, you know, when the kids can't find the ball because of the grass. And then when they grab the ball, they got all those bowl heads in their hand, can't throw it. And especially with other teams coming here as well. I mean, we've had over 100 kids for more than two years. So we got a lot of people and it's a program and we just wanna see it continue to build and get better. You know, we'd like to be able to consider tournaments, but that park will not, we'd be embarrassed to hold a tournament there. So we're hoping we can get that, that park.
I think we'd really appreciate if you do work with Larry to pinpoint all of it. I think you've given us a good picture already and we'll do it, but we'll get the public works crew in there to finish this.
Right now, it's a wide one. I look forward to meeting. So if we meet afterwards, we can decide on time or give it a number or how we perform.
Why don't you just call me?
It'd be great if I had your number.
I'll tell you what, while we meet after the meeting real quick, you know, I'll give you my card. We can arrange to get a meeting with Doug, our public works supervisor and see what we can come up with.
Thank you. Appreciate our time.
Also, if, if they are considering in the future, tournaments, sorry, maybe if we can give them some information on how to apply for some funds at the beginning of the year to help with that tourism.
You know, that's, that's an interesting point that you bring up, because a lot of, if you have the right kind of tournament and it's over a two day period of time, that brings in quite a few people to our community staying overnight.
Yes.
If they're coming from far, far enough away and you have enough going on that day.
So if we can help them.
That has some merit.
Go through that process and then essentially help the city as well, so, yeah.
Good suggestion. Anyone else for public comment?
I was quite surprised when I read this, because it's exactly what I came here to talk about. COVID-19, coronavirus, AKA the flu.
Sir?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm, I'm not familiar with your name.
Chet Biggerstaff, 4 Allen Drive. My bad.
Thank you.
What's happened is the Chinese have weaponized a form of the flu. They've increased its gain of function, which is its ability to transfer itself throughout a population, its catchability, if you will. But they did not increase the mortality rate. If you take the numbers from just South Korea alone, you're looking at a mortality rate that's slightly above the flu. This is, as some of you know, I've spoken about in the past, this is attacked by the cabal and it's meant to destroy what Trump's been doing. I, I'm absolutely astounded by what I watch on the news every single day. And it's nuts, it's like we've gone into bizarro land. COVID-19 is most greatly affecting those that are older and those that have pre-existing health conditions, just like the flu. Many of the scientists have done research and continuing to do research and they found HIV insertions. These were done by CRISPR. CRISPR is basically how you reprogram DNA. It doesn't occur naturally. This was a bioweapon produced in Wuhan at their Level 4 bioweapons lab, right in the middle of the city. You really don't have a whole lot to worry about. Just take your average precautions and I would suggest stocking up, as I always have, beans, bullets and Band-Aids, but you're gonna find shells are missing, toilet paper, water and sanitize, chemicals. This is just a glimpse of what's to come. Call it a, a trial run. I guess that's where I'll leave it, but don't freak out. Anytime yet.
Thanks, Mr. Biggerstaff. Anyone else here for public comment? If not, do we have a motion to close the meeting? We move to second to close city council for March 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.